Need to bring, if you're gonna have five people making these decisions or guiding or doing research, in my opinion, they need to have some kind of a background. And I also do see it as another layer of cumbersomeness in the community. I'm not ready at this point to support this unless there's more information such as what qualifications will be asked of the residents, exactly what the residents are gonna be asked to do. Because if you're gonna do this with department heads as well, then it's gonna have to be a daytime function. Because the department heads, you know, they're done at the end of the day unless you're gonna ask a department head now to come in at night. That's another, that's another change. And I'm not, I'm sure that's not gonna be what's wanted. So, I mean, I think this is an idea, but I, I think it needs more. I, from one feeling, it needs more. The other thing is, I personally would like to see the five residents come before the Board of Selectmen, and I'd like to interview these residents and see what their purpose, their mission, how they see their mission to be, and then go with any appointment. But that's just me. Is there any motion regarding this?
I agree. I'd like to see some, I'd like to see their mission statement so we know exactly what is going. I mean, I do think that this is a good idea. I am in support of it, but I just think that we need to, you know, get a little more information on it and kinda, and I agree about interviewing the residents, that it would be nice to know what kind of backgrounds we have going on this board.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead, Mary.
I don't think, I was, would've made a motion, but I don't think it would fly tonight. I think Leon did, in his second paragraph, you know, maybe just a couple, for me, maybe just a couple more sentences, 'cause you already said, "We'll be charged with the following mission." "Established to advise the Town Board of Selectmen, Town Meetings and Policies, Programs, Issues Promoting Environmental Sustainability in the Town of Sturbridge." Maybe just make crystal clear that they will not be doing X, Y, and Z that would hold things up. Because otherwise, I think, I think this is specific enough. I don't know how many other committees where we have even more specificity than what he's creating here. And I can appreciate Selectman Jimis' point, except expertise, I mean, the Conservation Commission has to develop a certain amount of expertise, the Planning Board certainly, and I don't see this as requiring any additional qualifications that are, that are more cumbersome or more sophisticated than what we have on our other committees. So, I don't share that concern. But long-term sustainability for any community is the present and the future.
What about a subcommittee of the Planning Board to do this? To me, that makes more sense than another committee upon another committee upon another committee. Because if the Planning Board had a subcommittee, just like we have subcommittees when we wanna do certain things, a Planning Board's subcommittee that can do this and help with this, they, first of all, they know the bylaws, number one. They know the parameters. They know the community. They have worked with businesses. They know what's required. And they would be, I think, an asset to the Planning Board and to any other businesses, 'cause they know this stuff. They know this better than a lot of people do. So, what about a subcommittee?
Yeah, and, as presented to us this evening, the Committee, the Sustainability Committee, would not be reporting to the Planning Board at all. They, it specifically says, "The Sustainability Committee would be to advise the Town Administrator, Board of Selectmen, and Town Meeting." So, that's who they would be reporting to. And, so, I think it's pretty clear what the mission is and what, who they would be reporting to. It's to advise us, the Board of Selectmen. It would be our subcommittee, not the Planning Board.
Everybody's subcommittee.
Yeah, I mean, it's the entire town. If we, if, when I, when I add Town Meeting there, that's, it's a subcommittee of the entire town to advise us on the long-term sustainability of our community. There are a considerable number of people, I believe, in town that are concerned about this issue. And I, I don't think it's necessary to delay the implementation of the Committee, but I would like to see the Committee come back, if it is formed, with, with some specific goals and objectives.
Right.
As to what they would be working on.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I just, I just wanna comment one thing. I think the Planning Board already has a full plate, and I think that the goal of this is to kinda go beyond the focus of what the Planning Board does. Because if you look at some of these things, solid waste reduction, recycling, water conservation, pollution prevention, I mean, I think that's far beyond what a Planning Board is charged to do. And I think that their reach would be much too great. Also, you know, when I mentioned the project that we want, to see if the recycling center is still a long-term win for the town, or if we should have curbside pickup, that's far beyond what a Planning Board, you know, would traditionally do. So, I mean, I would make a motion, but I think tonight it might be two-two, so maybe we should bring it back with Mary present, I guess. And maybe an opportunity for Leon to flesh out a little bit more.
Make a motion. If you're gonna make a motion, make a motion one way or another, then on what you would like to see.
Okay.
If you wanted to...
Well, I guess I'll make a motion that we direct our Town Administrator to flesh out the mission statement a little more and to bring this back to the Board at our next meeting, at our next scheduled meeting, which is 8:20.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Three to one.
So, in favor?
Three in favor, yes. Okay, next item is...
Madam Chair, in your agenda package, you will find the draft of the warrant for the 2018 state primary. It is your responsibility every four years to cast a vote to sign the warrants on behalf of the Town of Sturbridge to call for the election. So, I will give to you, I think you folks should vote that, and if you folks are so willing to sign all of those documents.
Okay. All right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
In your agenda package, you have a request from Charles River, operating as Sturbridge Taxi. They are looking to change their inventory. So, part of your responsibilities as the licensing agent for taxi and livery is that if there are any new vehicles to be added, the, you folks need to review that and to approve those. They have been reviewed by the, by the police chief. They were removing the '07 Dodge minivan, and they are replacing it with a 2004 Mercury sedan and a 2001 Lincoln Town Car limo.
You need a vote on that, right?
Yes, you do.
Is there a motion?
Can you just repeat what should be in the motion?
Yes, you should concur with the request of Charles River Services, operating as Sturbridge Taxi, to remove their, from their inventory, a 2007 Dodge minivan and replace it with a 2004 Mercury sedan, black, and a 2001 Lincoln Town Car limo, black.
Okay. I'll make a motion consistent with what the advice of our Town Administrator.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Discussion? All in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
Since we're talking about taxis, we might as well continue with them. The Sturbridge Taxi has a application for a new, a new driver. Keith Saurgurar of Dudley has been chosen by Sturbridge Car Service to be one of their drivers. They have been reviewed, subsequent to the time I sent to you the memo last week, it has been reviewed by the police chief, and he has no objection with the appointment of Keith Saurgo. And I apologize for butchering his name.
Is there a motion?
Okay. Do we have that in writing, too, from the chief?
Yes, I have a signed, we have his signed document.
All right. Oh, it's right here, it's put on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve a new driver, Keith Saurgo, for Sturbridge Taxi.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Vote carries...
Hi.
Is there a discussion?
No.
Vote carries four to nothing.
The next item on the agenda is a request for a one-day liquor license for Hamilton Rod and Gun Club. I will tell you that we received notification that the event is going to be canceled. So, we're gonna pass over that item.
Okay.
There is a request for a one-day liquor license for the Harvest Festival from Hardwick Winery. And I see some gentleman is here. Are you John?
Yes.
John? Come on over. As you know, the annual Harvest Festival is going to be October 13th and October 14th. We received a request from John Samick from Hardwick Winery to be a vendor for the event.
The Board have any questions of the gentleman?
Yeah, I, I have a general question. We've, we've discussed developing a policy for, well, this would be, this is, this would be a little bit different. We, we discussed developing a policy for our farmer's market for sale of, you know, perhaps cider, or, which is considered a wine, during, during a farmer's market. And I just wanted to ask you if, if there are other Town Commons on which you've, you've sold wine before, and if, and, do you know of any other Town policies in the area that have been developed for, for, you know, the sale of wine on a Town Common?
Yes, yes, I'm familiar with quite a few of the towns and cities. But first, let me say, it was nice to sit here tonight and attend your meeting and have you start with a pledge allegiance to the flag, because I do this quite often for this permitting and licensing process, and that's not always done in cities and towns. So, that was very nice. So, but to get to your question, yes. Westbrook Field, Westbrook Brookfield Asparagus Festival is on the Town Common, and I've been licensed there to sell my wine. I'm looking for a, the license that allows us to, it has to be the one-day liquor license for two days.
Yeah, it's consumption on...
Allow for free tastings, but no consumption, to be consumed off-premise. So, they, they try it, if they like it, they purchase a bottle, and they take it home and consume it.
This is exactly what was requested for the farmer's market.
Yes.
Is for tasting, but to be consumed off-site. We really haven't developed a policy for that yet, but I would like to get, get our act together very quickly, because the Harvest Festival is coming up soon, and I don't wanna delay in coming up with a, I think we want a policy that we can be fair to you and everybody else that comes before us.
Absolutely.
And so, if, if you, I would ask the Town Administrator to, to look into the policy. And I would be in, I was originally in favor of, you know, granting the license without, without a policy, but, but the other Selectmen brought up the issue of, we should have some kind of written policy about, about this issue.
Whatever you're comfortable with, and from town to town, city to city, they, they have their own policies. Everyone's different, it seems like.
Do we have to take action on this right away, or could we wait till our next meeting, if we can come up with a draft policy at the, at our next meeting?
Madam Chair, I think the challenge would be that the Board would need to have a discussion as to what you would want in a policy in the first place.
But this was one opinion, too, so I, I'd like to hear from the rest of the Board, too, see how they feel, too. But, Chase?
I, I agree with Mike. I mean, we, we did do this with the farmer's market, and we did do it hoping that we would have a policy in place by the time the next year for them rolled around. And, and I would like to see us work on that policy, you know, ASAP, so that we could, you know, grant a license to this gentleman before this Harvest Festival. I'd like to see us get, so it's fair to everybody, because I, I don't feel comfortable saying no to one party and then yes to another. I don't think that's right.
Mary?
Are you done? Oh, Mike already is done. Yeah, I mean, I guess, and also the stickler, we don't have any policy, we have no guidelines, no factors that we use. We've been doing it somewhat ad hoc, and I'm not in favor of that. And I know the rest of the Board differed with me, but I personally don't view the fact that we gave a one-day liquor license to a road race to pour beer really differently. So, I, I think we definitely, we need something in place, and I can appreciate our Town Administrator's concerns, he wants us to flesh it out. But certainly, you know, how much free tasting? I know with a farmer's market, under the Mass law, they get, like, one person could get so many free samples, and I, I can't cite the MGL exactly, but it sets it forth by statute. Now, we could allow less, we can't allow more than what state law requires, but we could be more stringent. But even here, I know your free tasting, I don't know, you know, for another night, I'd like to, you know, how much free tasting does everybody get? You know, you gotta prove, you're gonna card everybody that looks anywhere from, you know, 12-years-old to 50, you know, that type of thing. But we don't have anything in place, so I, I have voted against the other two for that reason, and I guess I'm not gonna be prepared tonight to grant it to you.
Understandable, understandable, it's reasonable.
Now, out of curiosity, in terms of the other communities where you're allowed to do this with a one-day license, and you said, you know, all communities have different guidelines, do they have their guidelines in writing? Have you been given something that you need to follow in terms of what they allow and disallow?
Generally, at this time here, the chief is involved, the chief of police, or the police department's involved.
Right.
And they want fencing, secure fencing, you know, proof of ID, ID-proofing, that type of thing. That's what they request.
And in one section of the common, I've heard that.
Right.
Kind of isolated from, not isolated, but self-contained.
Yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, certainly, like, whatever policy we come up with, one of them will have to be signed off by the, you know, chief of police, and turn to, you know, Tom Ford and ask him, "What kinds of factors should we put in our policy?" Like, I'd like to get input from safety and stuff.
Absolutely. A question I have, is there a Town bylaw in Sturbridge that doesn't allow?
No, but we haven't, you know, Mayor, I always like to call Mary our, our chair, well, she's our vice chair, and our chair is not here tonight, but I like to call her kinda like the institutional memory, 'cause she's been around for a long time. And I think she has said we have not, in the past, granted any kind of liquor license on the common, I think. I don't, you know, I, I don't, I don't know that, I'm not 99% sure, but certainly since I've been here, the only time we've really done it now is for this road race that is scheduled in September.
So, what I have learned is, we certainly don't solicit for this. We were invited by the, by the Harvest Festival to come.
Yeah.
So, once that happens, that starts the process, and that's where, where I'm at now with you folks, the local licensing authority. But to answer your question on the tasting, the law allows one-ounce tastings up to five one-ounce tastings.
Okay, okay, I knew, I knew it was written to...
They could try five different wines.
Directly in the law.
Up to one ounce each.
So, I mean, a Board would be free to allow the five, or four, or three, you know, we couldn't allow 10, but we're, like I said...
We could allow five.
We could allow five, or we could limit it more. We can always limit those statutes, we just can't expand upon the state law. But those are the type of things that personally I would kinda like to spell out.
Absolutely.
And, and why are we distinguishing, you know, selling a pouring license on the common where you're consuming it there versus taking it to go? Like, where's the distinction? I don't see it.
Leon, I was gonna ask the Town, do you know if we've ever done this before?
You've never done that since I've been here.
No.
I can't think, I don't know of any occasions from before.
I think Mary's mentioned it as well when we talked about it, but I can't speak for...
Then we need a motion. Whatever you choose to do, we need a motion.
A question, your farmer's market that you have in town?
Yes.
Who runs that? Is it...
We have a committee that works with our Special Events Committee. So, we have a, there's a separate farmer's market committee and works with Kevin Filczek, who heads up our Economic Development Tourism Division.
Yeah, and they could make a recommendation to us, one way or another, but it would still need to be the Board of Selectmen that actually issues the permit. They, they don't have that authority to do it.
Exactly, exactly. But your farmer's market manager should be aware of the local laws regarding this at farmer's markets, which is what, which would be probably the easiest route to go. It's, it's all spelt out for the farmer's market. So, if they're, if they're aware of that, your people may know that, your manager may know that.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Is there a motion regarding this?
I, I just wanted to note that I get, I believe the, the chief of police has, has signed off on this.
I have spoken with the chief about this in the past.
So, that, that was one of the criteria that we wanted to see in, in the, in the guidelines for approving these things, is that the police chief checks out the IDs and all the, you know, all the information there, so.
Can I ask a question? If we were to grant him a permit, and we were in the meantime of now and the Harvest Festival, do our bylaw, he would be required to file, file, you know, follow our bylaw that we create, correct?
Policy.
Rather than dragging him back.
You can make it a stipulation, you can, you can approve it, and with the understanding, if you choose to make a motion to approve it, with the understanding that, that individual would have to honor whatever bylaw is put in place by that time.
Rather than dragging...
Right. Not bylaw, but policy. We won't have a bylaw by then.
Yeah, we can't go to Town Meeting and get a bylaw passed.
I'll make a motion then to approve his liquor license pending the bylaw, or the policy that the Board of Selectmen come up with in the meantime.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Vote, opposed?
I'm not opposed, I'm gonna abstain.
Vote carries zero to one.
Till we see the policy, but that's a good idea.
So, it's approved.
Thank you.
You'll just have to follow whatever policy we put in place. You'll be notified, sent a copy of the policy, and know that that's what you'll have to do.
Terrific.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I, can I ask that we set a meeting with the Town Administrator regarding the policy at the next...
Sure, go ahead. Yeah, absolutely.
Town Administrator, at the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, could we get together and discuss this policy so we can get working on it?
I'll have this under old business for the next meeting.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Good night.
Next.
Next, I would like to ask for the concurrence of the appointment of Dane Labonte to the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Dane Labonte to the Master Plan Implementation Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
I would ask for the concurrence of the appointment of Frances Clark to the Council on Aging.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Frances Clark to the Council on Aging.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
Is that full now, the Council on Aging, with that appointment?
I believe so, yes. I believe so. Next is the, that time of year again, when the Town of Sturbridge is required to choose a member of the Board of Selectmen to serve as the second delegate to CMRPC, the Central Mass Regional Planning Committee. And I believe that that seat is currently held by Mr. Supranaut. And I believe that Mary is the alternate.
Right. Are you happy to continue to do it? You do a good job.
Yeah, it's, it's four quarterly meetings a year, and it's, it's good that somebody from the town goes, and I, I enjoy doing it.
All right, so I will make a motion that we appoint Selectman Mike Supranaut to serve as the delegate on the CMRPC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
Would you like to appoint an alternate?
I'm willing to continue to be the alternate.
Is there a motion to appoint Mary as the alternate?
I'll make a motion to appoint Mary Dowling as the alternate.
I'll second it.
CMRPC.
Any discussion? All in favor? Vote is four to zero.
I would ask the Board of Selectmen, accept a donation from the Tops Group for $50 for the use of the building at the senior center.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
You will note in the agenda that we did have something under old business, we have moved that to our next meeting. I did provide you folks some information in your agenda package regarding that. If any of the members of the Board of Selectmen have any questions or further inquiries that they would like before this comes up at their next meeting, just let me know, and I'm happy to research that further.
The net result of, of this would be just to ask that it be put on the next, next special Town meeting, but why are we putting it off till the next meeting?
Because we didn't have a full Board, and I asked him, I asked the Town Administrator to hold it.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I'm, I'm good.
Any, any old business? Chase?
No old business.
Michael?
An old business.
Mary?
Old business, no.
Okay. I just had Judy, did we reach out to Judy?
I did, I had a nice, long conversation with Judy.
She's enjoying her retirement.
She, yes.
Yeah.
She did wish us all very well.
Okay.
She is dealing with some personal issues right now, so.
All right, okay. Seven Main Street, that demolition that Nelson talked about?
Mm-hmm.
Where are we at with that?
I know that he's been working with the chief and with the DPW director, I will get an update for you for your next meeting.
The chief, police chief?
Fire chief.
Fire chief, okay. Okay, and contract negotiations, how are they going? Police contract?
We have fire negotiations tomorrow, and I have police negotiations on Thursday.
Okay.
So, ask me that question next week, and I'll give you a different answer.
All right. So, maybe we'll have an executive session on the 20th?
You will have an executive session, no matter what. I know we have discussions on the HEAL agreement that I emailed you folks, so you will definitely have a executive session at your next meeting.
Okay, that's it. New business? Chase?
No new business.
None?
Michael? Mary?
Yeah, I just have one. With the half marathon coming up, I'm hoping that the Board would support presenting Rick Hoyt, who's the marathon we are honoring, with some type of certificate of appreciation, recognition, that we can present him at the half marathon.
May I give you a suggestion?
I would love one.
Sometimes Boards of Selectmen will designate a, a day in honor of an event or a person. You could, you could dedicate the day as Rick Hoyt Appreciation Day, or something along those lines.
I would love that.
As like a proclamation. Perhaps Janay and I can put our heads together and, and come up with something nice that you folks can consider for your next meeting.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Correspondents?
Oh, I'm sorry, I have two items under new business, Madam Chair.
Okay.
In your, on your seats, I left for you two items that came up in the last 24 hours. The first is a request from CMRPC. This is the deadline, this week is the deadline for Mass Works program, and our neighbor to the north, the Town of Brookfield, has applied for a Mass Works grant that would have road improvements on Gay Road and Molasses Hill Road, and would benefit the Town of Sturbridge, as well as the larger central Massachusetts region. CMRPC has asked if we would be willing to write a simple letter of support for Brookfield's application. I've taken the liberty of putting something together on Town Stationery, and I'm hoping that you've had a chance to look at it, and if you folks are willing to authorize the Town Administrator to send this letter on the Town's behalf.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to ask the, the Town Administrator to send a letter on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, supporting the Town of Sturbridge's support for the, the Mass Works project in the Town of Brookfield for Gay Road and Molasses Hill Road.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Vote carries four to nothing.
And finally, I would ask the Board of Selectmen to accept the resignation of Robert And finally, I would ask the board of selectmen to accept the resignation of Robert Anderson from the DPW. He will be retiring.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept the, oh, to accept the retirement of Robert Anderson and thank him for his years of service with our DPW.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Nice. Discussion? All in favor? Vote carries four to zero.
I know I'm out of line, but can I add one more? New business?
Sure.
It's very brief. It should have been a public service announcement, but I just want to thank everybody that participated in the Pan-Mass Challenge, and in particular, the CERT team, whom I do have a couple of friends on there, and I know that they had to get there very, they were there from Friday at 4:00, right through everybody's check-in, and they had to report at 4:30 in the morning on the day of the race. And I know they do an outstanding job working in conjunction with our police department, and to all the bikers as well. It really is an honor to have them leave from the town of Sturbridge, so.
Correspondents?
Okay, correspondence from July 11th, from the town moderator, notice of appointment of Kevin Smith to the Finance Committee. Well, welcome back to Kevin Smith.
That didn't take long.
Yes. Good for him.
Everybody needs a break once in a while.
July 12th, the Assessors Department, notice of accepted participants to the senior work program. July 13th, from the Conservation Department, notice to abutters for tree removal in the wetland buffer zone. July 16th, from the DEP, a notice of non-compliance. July 26th, Omni Environmental Group, release of diesel fuel notification. July 30th, Bri Exstat Health Agent, resignation letter from the position. July 31st, Kevin Filczek, a TIF report on the Holiday Inn Express.
Okay, that's it. We have approval of minutes of July 17. Any corrections, changes?
I had no changes.
I have none.
Mary?
No.
Motion to accept these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Vote carries four to zero.
We have no other business before the board of selectmen tonight?
And there are no citizens? Take a motion for adjourned?
I'll make the motion adjourned.
Is there a second? I'll second it. All in favor? Vote carries four to zero.
I'm glad your first meeting was, you know, when the...
It's been an unboiling joke for years.